Good evening, welcome to the Lebanon City Council Meeting, December fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Mr. Burke, please call the roll.
Mayor Messer?
Here.
Mr. Norris?
Here.
Mr. Sellers?
Here.
Vice Mayor Matthews?
Here.
Mr. Lamro?
Here.
Mr. Schaefer? Mr. Cope?
Here.
Please join us for the pledge and then the invocation.
Other guard, hold! At ease! Ease and others!
Our pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Airy colors! Power heads, please. Thank you Father for today and tonight, Lord, and just the people that are here. We just thank you for the ability to be able to come to a meeting like this in a great country that we have. We just lift up the discussion today, Lord, tonight, as we go through to various agenda things. That level heads can prevail, conversation can be good. We just thank you, Jesus, again, just for this time of year, for what it means to all of us, and that we're able to participate and be in a meeting like today, Lord, in this great world we live in, in your precious name. Amen.
Looking at consideration of meeting minutes, November twenty-third, do I have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Burke, please call the roll.
Mr. Cope?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Obstain.
Mayor Messer?
Yes.
Mr. Lamro?
Obstain.
Consideration of work session minutes, November fifteenth and December first.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Burke, please call the roll.
Mr. Cope?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
Mayor Messer?
Yes.
Mr. Lamro?
Yes.
Consideration of organizational meeting minutes, December first, can I have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Burke?
Vice Mayor Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
Mr. Cope?
Yes.
Mr. Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Lamro?
Yes.
Mayor Messer?
Yes. So with recognition of visitors, our first visitor is Liza Sizemore. Please state your, her name and address for the record. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, council and citizens watching here and at home. My name is Liza Rae Sizemore, and I live at eight seven zero Franklin Road here in Lebanon. I am one of the founding members of Activate Lebanon, a local nonprofit that provides educational materials and organizes events to inform the citizens of Lebanon about voter registration, community elected officials, how to run for local office, and information about local ordinances, laws, and actions. First, I would like to congratulate the newly elected and sworn in members of council. Well done, and to wish Mayor Messer and Vice Mayor Matthews success in your new roles. On behalf of Activate Lebanon and our neighbors here in town, I'm here tonight to thank you and make three requests. First, in August, a citizen and council candidate at the time requested that council and city officials start publishing meeting packets with the upcoming meeting agenda on Fridays. This request was granted almost immediately, and I believe that this is a step forward in supporting your constituents and staying informed. So thank you, and thank you for hearing the citizens of Lebanon and taking action. For my request tonight, we are asking that the city of Lebanon take this a step further by doing three things. First, we're asking that you ensure that all meeting, both work session and council meeting minutes, are published within forty-eight hours of the meeting or no later than Friday when agendas and packets are published. Two, we're asking that you begin recording work sessions in the same manner that council meetings are done, using YouTube and the city channel. And then three, we're asking that all recorded meetings, council and work sessions, should include transcripts in the future. Two and three are especially important for our neighbors who are visually or and/or hearing impaired. We are asking this today because as of this afternoon, December fourteenth, the last city council meeting minutes published was for the November ninth meeting, the last work session minutes published was for the November third meeting, and the last audio recording made available for a work session was the October fifth meeting. We believe that these three actions requested will further the support, supporting the community and being informed, and fostering trust between council and the citizens. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, gentlemen and citizens here in the chambers with us, and also those of you watching from home. I'm Alicia Lipton, I live at four ten East Mulberry Street here in Lebanon, and I'm in front of you today for a couple of reasons. One, we live in the United States of America. The greatest thing about that is we have a democracy, or at least we're supposed to have a democracy. The beauty of a democracy is having all people represented. And as I look at this group up here, we are not all represented. There might be a difference in ages, but not a whole lot. You're all men, you all claim to be conservative Christian, and really lean to the extremist side. You're not even really part of the Republican Party anymore, since the last meeting there was a big blow-up. So what I'm asking you to note, we have Mr. Schaefer who has resigned his seat. It's a shame it wasn't done prior to the election, but I understand with home sales and timing, things like that happen. Your applications for new council members were due today by noon. I know that myself and several other of the candidates who ran in November applied for that position. I encourage you to look very closely at our applications for a few reasons. One, we'll bring diversity. Two, we're going to challenge you. And challenge is good. Groupthink is never good. And three, it would go a long way with the city to acknowledge the people they supported and came out to vote for on November the second, as opposed to selecting only the twenty-three percent that may have elected you. You serve all constituents, not just the few who voted for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Alicia. And lastly, Sam Zawski.
My name is Sam Zawski, I live at seven five four Calderwood Court in Lebanon. The reason I'm here tonight, I really just want to start a dialogue with the hopes of it being one of the first steps in turning a new leaf and repairing the deep divide in Lebanon. From my point of view, I think it starts with transparency. So I have ten questions that I plan to read within my three minutes, and I'm not reading any question with like an importance order. Number one, given the concealed carry ordinance, are city employees or elected officials who carry in chambers drug tested for controlled substances, and are they required to submit an actual proof of CCW? Number two, where can residents direct concerns about irregularities in the city business or conduct of elected officials, and is there an actual ethics hotline? Number three, is there a policy in place about elected officials or city employees personally bidding on property that is known to be in the interest of the city? For example, five three five North Broadway. Number four, is it permissible for city employees or elected officials to make promises of an employment by the city in exchange for goods and services? Number five, what is the policy for notifying the community if an elected official has been charged or is under investigation in a criminal case? And what is the process and what are the conditions for removing said elected officials from office? Number six, if the elected official is often in the spotlight, how can we retain innocent until proven guilty while protecting the reputation of our community? Number seven, what are the guidelines for the city's promotion of events hosted by local businesses? If promoted because it is marketed as a charitable event, how are donations monitored to ensure that things happen as expected? Number eight, is there an annual, a policy on annual filing of financial statements? Number nine, are there guidelines for elected officials to ensure there is not perception of pay for proximity to elected officials? And last but not least, term limits. While former mayor Brewer's tenure is remarkable, is it healthy to have council members serve for decades? And if we update the charter, could we please consider a limit? And that's all. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Mayor, just in reference to the minutes?
Yeah.
I just wanted to note for the record, so council had two meetings, November nine and November twenty-three, in November, and the meeting minutes that are being approved tonight, three of the four were meeting subsequent to the last meeting. And in the case of the November fifteen minutes, I just, in that particular instance, just didn't have enough time to prepare them prior to the meeting of the twenty-third, so I just wanted to clarify. There's certainly no intent in delaying them in any way, but I just wanted to make sure that was stated.
Cool. I just want to thank everybody for their comments, and we'll go through these things and look at them as a board, and we'll try to get back with any and all answers to those. So looking at regular meeting items, previous business ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash one one-two.
Ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash one one-two, approving updates to chapter one thirty-three, employment provisions of the city of Lebanon code. This ordinance approves changes to chapter one thirty-three of the city's code, which relates to employment provisions. This section had not had a complete update since two thousand and one, and this will bring it in line with the recently updated employee manual and will more accurately reflect current operations.
Do I have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Burke, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
Mr. Cope?
Yes.
Mr. Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Lamro?
Yes.
Mayor Messer?
Yes.
New business, resolution twenty twenty-one dash one one-seven.
Resolution number twenty twenty-one dash one one-seven, authorizing the acceptance of terms of the One Ohio subdivision settlement as it relates to opioid litigation.
This resolution authorizes the acceptance of the One Ohio subdivision settlement pursuant to the One Ohio MOU, and is consistent with the National Opioid Settlement Agreement.
Do I have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Burke, please call the roll.
Mr. Lamro?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
Mayor Messer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Cope?
Yes.
Mr. Norris?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Cope?
Yes.
Mr. Norris?
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash one one-nine. Oh, my bad, excuse me. Ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash one one-eight.
Ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash one one-eight, approving the final plot for Shepherd Trail, creating a new single lot of record, and dedicating public right-of-way and declaring an emergency.
This ordinance approves the final plot of Shepherd Trail, as approved by the Planning Commission, which combines three smaller parcels into one single lot of record to construct a single-family residence, and also dedicates a section of public alley as public right-of-way.
Do I have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Burke, please call the roll.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
Mr. Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Cope?
Yes.
Mayor Messer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Lamro?
Yes.
Mr. Cope?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash zero, or one zero, one one-nine.
Ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash one one-nine, approving the transfer of zero point zero four acres of property between the city of Lebanon and Amy Elizabeth Shepherd to facilitate improvements to a public alley and declaring an emergency.
This ordinance authorizes a property exchange between the city of Lebanon and Amy Elizabeth Shepherd for the purpose of reconstructing Cherry Street Alley. And the map on the screen there delineates exactly which parcels are being transferred. So there's a public alley that runs kind of behind the Cherry Street parking lot in parallel to E Street. A section of that existing alley is on Ms. Shepherd's property now. So the transfer would essentially carve off a piece of property where the alley is currently running through her property, and that would be dedicated to the city's public right-of-way. And then in exchange for that, kind of that long rectangular sliver of property that's adjacent to the existing bike path that the city owns, would be transferred to Ms. Shepherd. The acreages are identical, and there's no monetary compensation, just an exchange of the parcels.
This alley's been in need for a long time, so this is, this is good. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Burke, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Lamro?
Yes.
Mr. Norris?
Yes.
Mayor Messer?
Yes.
Mr. Cope?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash one two zero.
Ordinance twenty twenty-one dash one twenty, approving a new three-year bargaining agreement with IBEW, establishing terms for Electric Division Bargaining Unit and declaring an emergency.
This ordinance approves a new bargaining agreement with IBEW, which should be effective January first, two thousand and twenty-two, through December twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-four. Basically establishes the employment provisions for our Electric Department Union, establishing wage increases and other employment provisions throughout the term.
Do I have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Burke, please call the roll.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Cope?
Yes.
Mr. Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Lamro?
Yes.
Mayor Messer?
Yes.
Mr. Lamro?
Yes.
That concludes our, our new business, and moving on to discussion items, we have some boards and commissions and appointments thereof. Has everyone, would you? Have any to say that?
Yeah, I can kind of do it quick. Yeah, so this is something that we typically do in December every year. We have certain seats on our various boards and commissions within the city that expire. And so we've identified all of the seats on the various boards where the term is expiring this year, reached out to those that are currently serving in that capacity to see if they'd like to be reappointed by city council. If you look at the sheet that's in your packet, all of the names that are highlighted in yellow have requested to be reappointed. So this is for the Planning Commission, the Citizens Housing Committee, Recreation Board, Board of Zoning Appeals, Civil Service Commission, Board of Festivals and Tourism, Shade Tree Commission, and the Library Board. There's only two new appointments that are currently not serving to fill vacancies. One is on the Civil Service Commission, Rebecca Stroll, and then the other new appointment would be on the Library Board, Angel DeLeo. Both of the individuals who are currently in that seat did not want to be reappointed. Other than that, all the other names that you see on here are reappointments for new terms on those boards and commissions.
So for clarity, those two are currently on, do not wish to continue?
They, no, Angel and, Angel DeLeo and Rebecca Stroll wish to be appointed.
Okay.
They're not on it right now, but they wish to be appointed.
Great.
Correct. And they have sent in, yeah, they've sent in written requests to be.
Well, good. Well, whenever we can make that decision, I help out for both of them.
Yep.
They're great, so. Do we want to? Can I have a motion to approve as appointed, as listed, or do we want to take some time to? I don't, I don't, I don't think we need to. I, I think, so, maybe not as a whole, I think we could have a little discussion going through each board and probably go as a whole. Yeah. But to have a little discussion, so for example, the Planning Commission, both Ms. Rayler and Mr. Ruskman have done a great job on the Planning Commission, and I would support those, and go down that way. Yeah. I'm fine with that. So can I have a motion to approve the, the Planning Commission as, as listed?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Burke?
Do you need to show hands on that?
Yes, you can do hands if, it's up to council.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Right hand? All opposed? Uh, so the.
Obstain.
Just not raising.
Yeah.
So, so the minutes will reflect that Bernie Uckman of one sixteen East Concord Drive and Jeffrey Ailer of four four seven Silverwood, Silverwood Farms Drive are appointed to a term that expires December thirty-one, twenty twenty-five.
Moving to the Citizen Housing Committee, can I have a motion to approve as listed?
So moved.
So let me, I have a question. So whoever, you know, they have someone who runs these commissions, and are these people being supported by those who run the commissions? Because I don't know them, and so is that how this is working here? I'm asking.
Yeah, I can say in terms of, you know, the staff that are involved with Planning Commission, Recreation Board, Shade Tree Commission, Board of Festivals and Tourism, you know, and staff's interaction with those board members, they're all recommended, I mean, they've been productive. Citizens Housing, that, that's a committee that has not met in a number of years. So that committee really just meets if somebody gets a property maintenance violation and wants to appeal it, then they can take that before the Citizens Housing Committee, and we just haven't had an appeal in years for any property maintenance type violation. So that, that committee is not overly active, they just meet as needed. So I haven't had as, obviously, as much interaction with them.
Frankly, yeah, it's the same way with the Civil Service Commission.
Same.
The Civil Service Commission only really meets if there's an appeal by an employee who's disciplined and believes that they should be not disciplined. I think Board of Zoning Appeals is largely the same, they meet.
They usually meet about six times a year, yeah.
Some of the other boards will meet periodically, they're, they're citizen committees, so they're sitting and run, with the exception of the Planning Commission where the mayor is a, a member per charter. Most of these don't have like direct council involvement, they make recommendations to council, they have support, some support from staff, but they don't, they don't really have council people who are necessarily attached to them, they're sort of, or really, you know, staff will provide help and support, but they don't really run the committee, it's, it's a citizens committee.
Sure.
And they sort of run it. Some of these committees are actually, like the Planning Commission, it's actually required that we have one in the charter.
Yep.
Some of them were created by council through legislation.
So specifically, the ones that have been highlighted and noted on here are, are the recommended ones, not just the ones that are up for, you know, terms of.
They're, they're all active and have requested to be reappointed or appointed, yes.
Trust our citizens. Yeah, thank you.
Is there a second for that? Show of hands, do you approve? Do you want to read off?
So, yeah, the minutes will reflect that Marcia Colopy of five seven one Audubon Drive was appointed for a term expiring twelve thirty-one twenty-three, and Sean Riley of fifteen ninety St. Ives Court was appointed for a term expiring twelve thirty-one twenty twenty-four.
Moving on to the Rec Board, I have a motion to approve as listed?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor?
So the minutes will reflect that Barb, and I apologize to Barb if I screw up her name, but I think it's Lightshue, Barb Lightshue of four fifty-three Deerfield Road, was appointed to the Rec Board, Recreation Board for a term expiring twelve thirty-one twenty twenty-four.
Board of Zoning and Appeals have a motion to approve as listed? So moved, with, for Mr. Knapp and Mr. Kaufman. Any discussion? Cope? Cope got second?
Yeah.
All approved? All in favor?
So the record will reflect that Brad Knapp was appointed to the Board of Zoning Appeals, he lives at four fifty-six South Broadway, his term will expire twelve thirty-one twenty-four, and Robert Kaufman of one forty-four East Mulberry is also appointed to the Board of Zoning Appeals for a term expiring twelve thirty-one twenty twenty-four.
And we've gone to the Civil Service Commission. For Rebecca Stroll, can I have a motion to approve as listed?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
So the record will reflect that Rebecca Stroll of four eighty-six Nollcrest Court in Lebanon, Ohio, is appointed to the Civil Service Commission for a term expiring twelve thirty-one twenty twenty-six.
And that's stated, that's a, that's a new appointment compared to many of these others that are re-ups. That's a six-year term also. Board of Festivals and Tourism, I have a motion to approve as, as listed?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on these? Great to see Mary Alice is still. Yeah. That's wonderful. All in favor?
The record will reflect that Mary Alice Leisure of one forty-one Concord Drive was appointed to the Board of Festivals and Tourism for a term expiring twelve thirty-one twenty twenty-five. Mary Kly of fourteen forty-three North Broadway was also appointed to the Board of Festivals and Tourism for a term expiring twelve thirty-one twenty twenty-five. Ray Kimmerlin of four sixteen Cedar Lane appointed to the Board of Festivals and Tourism for a term expiring twelve thirty-one twenty twenty-four, and Elizabeth Clark of seven twenty-one Franklin Road is appointed to the Board of Festivals and Tourism for a term expiring December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Like the Board of Festivals and Tourism, do they co-mingle with Main Street and Chamber? And, I mean, how does, because they're all about the same thing, I would, is there a, I'd be interested to know more how the boards operate, or where I could get like an overview of what each board is.
Yeah, the Board of Festivals and Tourism, so they approve all new events, well, they're a recommending board to city council for all new events that take place in public right-of-way. So if it's an event in private property, that doesn't necessarily have to go through the Board of Festivals and Tourism, but any new event for the first three years has to go before the Board of Festivals and Tourism, and they will ultimately make a recommendation for approval or not approval. So that's the mission. They do, I think we would like to see this board also get more engaged and maybe kind of the marketing side of things, promoting the city, and I know that's something that we'd like to see them move in that direction. But primarily, their role is to review, work with the applicant, to make sure that new events are successful, and kind of, you know, reflect the, the community.
I can see that. I can see the need for conversation. We've got three strong groups, that board, Main Street Lebanon, Chamber, and making sure, plus the other various entities that are, like, the Historical Society did their own festival in September, making sure everybody's kind of knowing what each other's doing. And they're all great, I love it, but, you know, that there's.
Yeah, coordination between them.
Yep. Thank you. Moving on to Shade Tree Commission. Have a motion to approve as listed?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on these?
Shade Tree's great. They are very passionate about their group. I remember coming up through the Rec Board, we'd have joint meetings every now and then, and very good commissioner.
How often do they meet, Adam?
They meet monthly. And it's, it's related to working on the owned city property, the trees that the city owns.
Yeah.
So.
All in favor?
So the record will reflect that Jim Lundwick of thirteen thirty-four Laurel Brook Way was appointed to the Shade Tree Commission for a term expiring twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-five. Don Mowry of four forty-one Autumn Wind Drive also appointed to the Shade Commission for a term expiring twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-five. And Mickey Markey of one twenty-two East Warren Street appointed to the Shade Tree Commission for a term expiring December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
And lastly, the Library Board, have a motion to approve as listed?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
The record will reflect that Gail Rose of three oh five Sheffield Court in Lebanon was appointed to the Library Board for a four-year term expiring twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-five. Angel, Angel DeLeo of eleven seventy Walnut Creek Trail is a new appointee to the Library Board for a four-year term ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. And Bonnie Eris of two thirty-four Iroquois appointed to the Library Board for a term expiring December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
The, the Library Board's a little unique, might be a good chance to talk about it. So City Council appoints their board, but in terms of the daily operations, they have their own executive director, you know, Mark and I, city staff, really aren't involved in, in running or managing the operations of the library. I did make a note to try to get their executive director into council meeting next month or so, just maybe give an update to City Council.
That'd be great.
Yep.
Thank you.
I did have a question.
Yeah.
Is the vacancy for the Rec Board, the Turtle Creek seat?
No, there's a, we have.
Is that one filled?
That has not been filled, and I have, I have passed that along to Tammy Boggs, our administrator, that they have a vacancy. But we also have a, a vacancy for a Lebanon resident on the Park Board, and I think, yeah, Park Board, there is a vacancy on Citizens Housing Committee, and the Board of Festivals and Tourism. So we have three, three still vacancies at this point.
Great, thank you.
So if someone's interested, do they just submit a?
Yeah, if they're interested, they can.
Reach out to you?
Email, reach out, we'll get them the application. But certainly, yeah, encourage anybody who is interested to reach out to, to my office.
What were the, Park Board, what were they?
Park Board, Citizens Housing Committee, and the Board of Festivals and Tourism.
So everybody hear that? We got three vacancies. Uh, City Manager, report.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So this is the last meeting of City Council for the year, so just want to remind folks of that. I did want to update council, so City Council had previously authorized the city to purchase the grow property off of Glossa Road for our electric substation construction project. We are going to close on that property Monday, so we got through the environmental review phase, everything looks good, and we're going to be executing the documents on Monday, so we'll have that one done. And we are in the final stages of negotiating a, a new three-year rail agreement with LMNM that will be joined to City Council for consideration, hopefully in January. So just wanted to update folks that we have been working on that, been meeting with, with Ray on several occasions. I think we're to the point where we're about ready to bring something to council for your consideration.
Very good.
That'll come to, in a work session?
Yes, so we go to work session first, and then obviously would have to be voted on by City Council. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, discussion items, because we have an executive session that we'll be right into. Mr. Sellers?
Um, no, just, I mean, my first, this is my first official council meeting, and, you know, I love, love hearing from the citizens. I think that's one of the things I'm most excited about in this role. And, you know, I'm really excited to work alongside these gentlemen, and, you know, for, to help provide the God-given liberty to the community, so looking forward to it.
Mr. Lammerow?
I have none.
Mr. Norris?
I just want to say that the Carriage Festival was unbelievable. Had a different view this year, which was cool, riding in it, was able to see everybody that was there. And, and then I don't know if you guys have had a chance to look at those aerial shots that some.
Those are awesome.
Because I was so proud of Lebanon that night, not only just how it went off pretty much without a hitch, but the organization of getting as many people. I know there were some complaints about crowds, but I've been to the Rose Bowl several times, the parade, and that's, that's huge crowds. So this is smaller compared to that, but we get people in and out, it's amazing. And the way the city works and law enforcement and all the volunteers that helped out, just was really proud of Lebanon that night. And coming through early the next morning, it was like it didn't exist, it was amazing. They work all night, get Lebanon back in shape, so it just really hands off, or hats off to the city and all the work that was done and the volunteers. It was a, it was a big night. Do we have any estimate of people?
Feels like it was the biggest, but.
It was huge.
Yeah, I really couldn't tell you how many. It's so hard to, to get a feel, because it's so spread out.
Right, there was rows on rows. It was huge. And, and seeing it from the inside made it different, because you could see. So, but I really appreciate that night, that was a good, good start for the holiday season.
Vice Mayor Matthews?
I'll echo what Councilmember Norris said about all the wonderful things, the, as well as the carriage rides around town, and both Main Street and the Chambers stepping up, and city staff making it happen, the tree lighting and everything, a wonderful start to the season. And it's continuing, there's the Santa at the Beetle Cabin, which is free and open, the last weekend and this upcoming weekend, I believe. Uh, is it, or is it done?
I think it was just.
It was just this year. This year, just this year.
Yep, so that was great. And many in the community know Mr. Tom Cox passed, so if you keep his families in your, in your prayers. And then he did a lot for the community. And then a blessed Advent, Merry Christmas, because we'll see you next year.
I had one comment, so in the last, on the December first meeting minutes, we were going to determine if there were restrictions on distributing the city proceeds to new fund to, and we were going to track settlement funds. So I just want to make sure that something in the works, that we're going to be able to talk about that here at the beginning of the year. And, and I think the transparency comments are great. I, I would like to see maybe in the meeting minutes somehow those bolted list, so that it might be better to track it. I think there's mechanics behind, you know, we, we run a very lean city government, and so I think people need to understand there's mechanics behind getting some of the stuff out that I would like to make sure we address. Just, for example, being behind in workload, not be able to get them out. I don't, I don't think we need to hang transparency questions about some of the mechanics. We need to make sure we can get that together for either videos that are posted. And I certainly appreciate the transparency that this, you guys are new on it, but just from my brief amount of time, how transparent everybody was is, sticking to sunshine rules, sticking to, to just the way we conduct our business, and it makes me proud to sit on this council. That I would recognize that the city voted the makeup of this council, and they feel like we can serve, be servant leader, that's my goal, regardless of the makeup of who sits on council at any given point in time. And so that, I'm glad that the city spoke loud and clear, and that we have a chance to prove them right in, in their trust. And so regardless of the makeup of the council, of what bodies sit in these seats. So, and also, I would wish everybody Merry Christmas and Happy Hanukkah, and wherever their faith leaves them, that this is a blessed time of year, and I'm excited for it. So thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for your comments. Thank you for everybody that, that came tonight. It was a fantastic carriage parade. We had people from Jamestown and Slade and Xenia, they were all down here and watching it, had a big group. It's, it's fun to see the city all lit up and ready for Christmas, and just want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, and, and we'll see you in a few, few short weeks. Our next meeting is the fourth, I'm pretty sure. And then in our executive session, we won't be taking any action tonight, but we'll be going through, through things and, and looking at the makeup of our City Council next year. So with that, Mark?
Okay, so I would need a motion to adjourn into executive session pursuant to Ohio Vice Code one twenty-one, twenty-two, G one, to consider the appointment, the appointment and/or employment of a public employer official. And G seven, to consider confidential information related to the marketing plan, specific business strategy, production techniques, trade secrets, or personal financial statements of an applicant for economic development assistance, or negotiations with other political subdivisions, respecting requests for economic development assistance provided that both of the following conditions apply. The information is directly related to a request for economic development assistance that is to be provided or administered under any provision of Chapter seven fifteen, seven twenty-five, seventeen twenty-four, or seventeen twenty-eight, or Section seven oh one point zero seven thirty-seven thirty-five point six seven to thirty-seven thirty-five point seventy, fifty-seven oh nine point four zero to fifty-seven oh nine point four three, fifty-seven oh nine point six one to fifty-seven oh nine point six nine, fifty-seven oh nine point seventy-three to fifty-seven oh nine point seventy-five, or fifty-seven oh nine point seventy-seven to fifty-seven oh nine point eighty-one of the Ohio Vice Code, where that involves public infrastructure improvements or the extension of utility services that are directly related to an economic development project, and in this case, a unanimous quorum of the public body, determined by a roll-call vote that the executive session is necessary to protect the interests of the applicant or the possible investment or expenditure of public funds to be made in connection with economic development project.
Mike, what was that fourth number? Do you remember?
I had to smile.
You were tracking that.
Fourth one was seventeen twenty.
So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Burke, please call the roll.
Mr. Lammerow?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
Mayor Messer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Coe?
Yes.
Mr. Norris?
Yes.
Thank you all for joining us, we will see you next year.